Twenty-five minutes. I'll make the motion right through then. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I made a mistake, the made one was the agenda.
Well, we got it all figured out anyway.
Okay. I'm an officer.
Um, so first of all, you need to correct, last month I said that. Oh, I need to make a correction, last month I said that I received beverage applications from Tom O'Dane and it was actually from Tom Cunningham. And so I'm asking the board to approve his applications. And then I've got just the bills, Black Hills Energy, ACH 1192, Cheyenne Sanitation, check 10435 for 128554. Uh, SHP Holdings, which is Custer Chronicle, check 10436 for 13941. Fall River Water District, check 10434 for 25340. Golden West, ACH 10842. Hawkins, check number 10437 for 30657. Helms, check 10438 for 625. Pella Windows, uh, check number 10439 and that's for four windows, uh, 2049744. And those monies come out of the breakfast donations that, for the breakfast that the community center has been having. Um, and then for three months of stamps, uh, with board, check number 10440219 dollars. Verizon ACH for the hotspot, forty dollars and one cent. Uh, Ray Hasty, check number 10441, board fees for April, sixty dollars. Terry Kaiser, um, I put his board fees and his, um, work hours and his reimbursement altogether on check number 10442. So for board fees, he had sixty dollars. Um, unfortunately, when he worked on Pine Street, he had ten hours, unfortunately, three, he was on second in Cedar. He had nine hours for a total of two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And he had some reimbursements for Bongars, for a hundred and five dollars, twelve cents and Copacabana for the Bot Cat at fifteen dollars for, um...
Backhoe.
Or the backhoe, sorry, not the Bot Cat. So that's check number 10442 and the total is four forty-three thirty-two. Wendy Ritchie, board fees, check number 10443, sixty dollars. Shelley Harris, salary, check number 10444, one thousand ninety-eight ninety-seven. And last month I bought stamps for the town, check number 10445, uh, seventy-three dollars. Christine Wells, April salary, check number 10446, ninety-two thirty-five. And Carrie Zolak, check number 10447. Carrie had forty-five hours and after Social Security Medicare, that's six eighty-five seventy. And she had an eighty-two mile reimbursement and that's fifty-three thirty for a total of seven thirty-nine. And that's all.
I'll make the motion right there.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we have beverage license renewal for...
Pardon?
For Cadillac, Cadillac Ranch and Last Chance Saloon. I'll make the motion to renew them. If anyone in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's the hotel?
The hotel. Sanitation Department.
All right, uh, the, uh, uh, sanitation department, I have a meeting the eighth, which would be Thursday night, uh, with them. And I'm assuming that that last meeting we had, they would finish up the dirt work and then start the concrete work on their retaining laws, for lack of a better word. So I'm assuming that they're starting on that and I'll find out more about that, uh, on Thursday night as far as what they're doing or how little progress. Uh, so I guess that's as much as I know.
Aren't they talking about having a tire plan again too?
They were talking about, last meeting, they were talking about having a tire reclamation, they were definitely on topic. At whatever, but that I do not know anymore information, I haven't heard anymore, but they were talking about, you know, well, with four or five years ago, Carrie, that they had a big push and all, like get rid of old tires and all, and I know there's a big issue, uh, with, with the landfill over here and the state on the pile of their used tires. And I think they were in the process of getting that worked out, where we get rid of the used tires and, well, what if, I don't know what they had planned to do with them, but there was a plan that they were talking about.
Okay, yeah, that turns out pretty good deal. Everyone turned in their old tires and, uh, haul, they hauled down the landfill and all that.
And then they'll take them and then, I, I don't know what they do with them, but it's none of my damn business. But anyway, that, that we have a place that, that I think sure, that way to get rid of our old tires around, yeah.
Thank you. Carrie? There's a blue Subaru out here with his lights on, it's a blue Subaru, Pennington County place.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, water department, I think, girl, Carrie?
I don't have, I didn't get a chance to go to that expo like I wanted to, so I don't have any information, um... I think I would like to raise to go along with my license itself.
Okay, they're gonna address that, uh, the second part of the meeting.
Uh, I don't know anything.
Okay.
I can't think anything I can know.
Okay, we got two guest speakers, one's gonna be talking about the lead pipes in our system and the other one's gonna be talking about our grant, uh, for redoing the cast iron pipes. And also, she's also gonna talk about the Custer River County Emergency Management. And, um, we'll start with Erin Farnia. I butcher it.
I'm a drill sergeant, don't just talk loud. My name is Erin Farnia, I'm with the State of South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources Program, specifically the drinking water program. One of the roles that I have within that program is the lead service line inventory. In 2021, the EPA came out with a rule called the Lead and Copper Rule Revision, call that the LCRR for short. That rule required every regulated water system across the nation, we'll keep it dialed in to South Dakota, to create a hundred percent system-wide inventory of all of the service lines. That service line inventory, regardless of the presence of lead or not, every system had to complete it by October 16th, 2024. So you might ask the question, well, what is a service line? Everybody needs to know what the service line is so that we're all on the same page. A service line is the water pipe that connects the water main to your house. In most towns, it goes from a water main to a curb stop and then the curbs, which is usually owned by the town, that portion of the pipe is usually owned by the town. And then from the curb stop to the house is usually owned by the customer, by the resident. So that is the pipe that I'm talking about, the pipe that connects the water main all the way to the house. So Buffalo Gap submitted their 2024 inventory, which was great, they, they, you are in compliance there. In the meantime, the EPA came out with a new rule called the Lead and Copper Rule Improvements, which we call the LCRI for short. The LCRI requires all lead lines to be removed from all water systems within ten years of that rule becoming effective. That rule becomes effective November 1st, 2027. And so by 2037, all lead lines would need to be removed from water systems to include the connector. So take a step back, in the olden days, especially if there's cast iron, uh, lot, water mains in the system, there is what's called a connector. And this connector was used to connect the water main to that service pipe, to the water pipe. These were also made of lead. And so I have a glove on because this is actually a lead pipe and sometimes I feel it gives me, uh, gives me itches when I'm just touching with my hand. But how it was used is this, uh, fitting here would connect to the corporation stop at the water main. And this particular one, so this connects to the water main and then it comes up and this was a galvanized pipe that would run to the curb stop. So this portion is a galvanized connector to the service pipe and then it would run all the way to the house. These two have to be removed anytime a water system exposes one. They cannot leave it in place after it's been exposed and work is being done on that line. So I bring this up because in Buffalo Gap's 2024 inventory, they identified that there's thirty-eight lead lines within the system on the portion of the pipe from the water main to the curb stop. So it's a portion of the pipe that the city owns, which means the city will have to pay for that and will have to get those pipes out by 2037. They can do no less than four pipes a year. So starting in 2027, the town would have to replace at least four pipes a year to get you to that full replacement by 2037. Additionally, they identified that they have fourteen lead connectors. So in a lot of the cases, the lead connector is on the same line with the lead pipe. But in some cases, there, there could be a situation where this is by itself and it connects to a poly pipe. It still has to be replaced if there's work that is done on that line at any time. So the important number for you to know is, there's fourteen of these that have to get replaced and there's thirty-eight lead pipes that have to get replaced by 2037. Um, I bring that up because I, I know that there's a funding, the town has a, a project to replace the cast iron pipes in town. And part of that project will replace, it's already, it's already planned for to replace these lead pipes. And so, um, that is a good thing, that the lead pipes will be getting removed as part of that project. So I just wanted to share with everyone that, um, what the summary is of your lead service line inventory and what some of those requirements are that are, that are pushing the need to get those lead service lines out. Are there any questions at this time?
Our, so that project that we currently have scheduled, is that gonna replace all thirty-eight and fourteen?
So that's, that's, uh, I believe it covers all the...
That's, that's the only place that's lead pipe is still anywhere in our system, is what I got.
Where the cast iron mains are.
So there's no outliers, that's more of what I was getting at, so, okay.
That's, uh, so it's based off of the inventory, I rely on, on your local knowledge as to, I have the addresses, but I don't know the...
I didn't hear your comment, um, because of Sunday when I was at the state.
All I was asking is if the water, the current water project would cover those thirty-eight lines and the fourteen connectors. I was making sure that there weren't any outliers, um, that might not be picked up in the project.
No, I didn't hear your comment either, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so what I would recommend, because I don't know, I have the addresses, as the town has the inventory, I would, you would want to ask your town representatives if those addresses are covered in that project. Because I'm not, I'm not on the funding side, I have the inventory and it's, it's public knowledge, I can email it to anybody, but I just don't know their location in town from knowledge of that funded project. But I do know, because I've looked at the plan, that there are service line material in the, um, the facilities plan. It includes replacement of the service lines to the curb stop. Um, and it's, it's a, I don't know if anybody else from the town wants to comment on that or wait for Jennifer to comment on that, but, um, there are service line replacements included in this project.
The only, the only thing that the town isn't responsible for is if, if there's actually a, you know, a galvanized pipe or something that comes out that lead service that goes into their house and the homeowner's responsible for it.
So the town is responsible to pay for the portion that they own.
Any other question?
Sorry. Um, so, do we ask like Carrie or Zach if there's lead, all we want is we don't really use our water at the store, if there's lead from my apartment that needs to be replaced, like is that something that the town can have or do we have to take it up?
No, you, you gotta pass the line before, like, so it's already...
So the inventory, when it was completed, inventory both the public and the private side?
That was...
It's all, it's a hundred percent, so however the town executed filling out their inventory, it covered both from the water main to the curb stop and the curb stop to the house? Or to the business?
Yeah.
So who do we contact to find out if lead was found or not?
Carrie or Terry, whoever, I would start with your water operator to get your inventory and, um, you can always call me too, and I, I have a PowerPoint presentation, but I didn't bring a cord to connect, so I can give you my business card if you would like, because it's, it is public knowledge, so I can look that up for you based off of your address.
Anyone else? Well, thank you, Erin. I'm for ninety minutes trial your last name.
Good evening, my name is Jennifer Seetsman, the Executive Director with Black Hills Council of Local Governments and we... Can everybody hear me okay? I'm not a drill sergeant, but if she starts telling me to drop and, you know, do pushups, I'll, I'll project, because I don't like pushups. Is everybody good? Can you all hear me okay or should I use the... Okay, so, we are the entity responsible for helping the city secure your funding for both phases of the project. Uh, phase one was funded, it's completed, at that time you came away with a, a really great funding package, zero percent interest on your loan for thirty years. Uh, the phase two application was considered by the Board of Water and Natural Resources in March and you received a seventy-four point five percent principal forgiveness loan. That's at the top of where they can, they can subsidize the project, so that's really good. So the loan amount for this project is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand on a one point three million dollar project. You got about nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in grant. So, came away pretty good, your, your interest rate was also below, um, where everyone else who's doing a project is. You were at three percent for thirty years this time. So, with that, there's a couple things that are going to have to happen by city council and, uh, and co. Uh, so you'll have to pass two resolutions, one is a, a bond resolution, um, which should be sent to the city by your bond council, which is a requirement of the, the funding, um, you have to have bond council, they've prepared that and sent it your way. If you don't have it, I brought a copy. That just makes your loan legal. And then the other one is the surcharge resolution. So you might remember that I came out here before we did the application and we talked about the impact to the users if you were to do this project. Uh, because it was heavily subsidized with principal forgiveness loan, essentially a grant, that you don't have to pay back, you're really only gonna have to raise your rates, um, you can restructure your rates based on the state's evaluation. You're currently at, and again, this isn't gonna register with you because the state evaluates rates based off five thousand gallons. So, the numbers I'm telling you are based off five thousand. Currently, the city's at fifty-seven dollars per five thousand gallons. And they're saying you can restructure and absorb some of the cost of repayment of this new loan and you'll only have to raise your rates by eight dollars per person per month, you know, to be able to meet that. I know that can sound like a lot, but if you were to have to pay for this without any subsidy, your rates would be around a hundred and twenty-five dollars. You would need about sixty-six dollars per person per month. So, you guys turned out pretty well with that.
Do you need, do you need for household?
Yes, so, so the fifty-seven dollars per month, if you use five thousand, if you use less or you want a tiered structure, is it based on usage? Okay, so, again, they evaluate, when they look at all the projects across the state, they're, in order to do that evenly, they look at based on five thousand. So if you use less, you're gonna be a little bit less, the surcharge applies to everyone. So this eight dollars, everyone will pay plus, I think, was it five dollars on your last one? So, it'll be together and that's paid by everyone regardless.
I just wanted to find out if it was for household or suddenly our water bill's gonna double because we're gonna be paying for two persons.
No, 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 so I'm sorry, per customer. Um, so yeah, you'll have two resolutions, the bond resolution and the surcharge resolution to restructure your rates. Um, in regard to the lead service lines, if you're one of the homes or individuals that has lead service lines, one of the things we've seen, because these projects have been, I mean, these rules have kind of ramped up across the state for a long time, uh, one of the things we did see is some of the homeowners reached out to, when, when the city bids that on, you know, for the project, sometimes you can get a deal on, if you have to hire somebody from Rapid to come down here to fix that, it might cost more money. But if they're coming down to do multiple, fourteen of them or thirty-eight of them, um, there could be some cost savings in doing that. And so it might be worth it, uh, to talk with the engineer, um, again, it can't be paid for with the funding, but if they're here and already doing the work and they've already dug up from the road to the curb stop, you know, and they can add in that other, you would get invoice separately, it wouldn't be part of the city, but we have seen several communities who have at least asked the question with their engineer and then the engineer has, you know, mentioned it to the contractor and a lot of times they are willing to do that. Um, again, you would get your own personal invoice for that portion, but if they're here doing that work. So there might be some potential for cost savings for those of you that have to address your lines. Um, in regard to your first drinking water loan, there's still sixty-four thousand dollars about left on that and that's a zero percent interest loan. So my suggestion would be is if there's design engineering at all or any kind of costs for engineering that, you know, your engineer comes up with, I would suggest drawing that, because it is eligible under that first loan, it's zero percent. And it might, if your project comes in over budget, it'd be good to just have those other funds, so, um, so just know that there is a little bit left on that one, it'd be a little bit cheaper for the city. And then, um, your SAM registration is expired, so, uh, it's still under Heather's name, so somebody is going to need to get registered in the SAM. If you don't know how to do that, our office can assist and we can lead you through it step by step. I'm gonna leave Kaylee's card, because she's our person in the office that does that. And then, and you'll have to do that to get any more disbursements from your, any of your funding. And then, I'm gonna move on to the participation in the Custer County mitigation plan. So every five years, Custer County has to update their mitigation plan, it's for natural hazards, uh, to help you plan for that and be prepared if, if you have any issues. The city of Buffalo Gap can participate at no cost and then you're covered. And what that means is when funding becomes available or if you have a natural disaster that hits your community, um, you, you would essentially be covered. If you don't participate, your applications through mitigation programs will be constantly in competition with the county, because the county will have to apply on your behalf, you might not be the highest priority. If you have something that hits county, countywide, you can't apply on your own, you have to go apply under the county. And so, in my opinion, it's a really good deal, it costs you nothing. Um, we are the ones that are, we authored those plans and we've done every iteration, I think, for the last fifteen years and for Custer County. So, again, you get something for nothing, which doesn't happen very, very often. That sign-on letter though, or the participation letter, would have to be approved today, because the grant that will pay for Custer County to do this work or to pay us to do the work is due March, or May 30th. So you won't have another meeting before that's due. And, and I guess one of the things to, um, sounds like there's gonna be some changes mandated for, for power companies in the area on when they have to shut off power. One of the things through these mitigation programs is you can, um, receive seventy-five percent grant to cover backup generators for your critical facilities. So if you have any kind of water infrastructure that relies on power, I don't, I don't know if you need it to fill your tanks or run your pumps or do other cool things, um, you can buy generators, backup generators through that program. And that's, I would say that, maybe you already got one, did you get one for this community building a few years ago?
Yeah.
Yes. So, again, if you need more of those in town for critical infrastructure, that's probably gonna be the biggest benefit other than if there was something big that happened here. Um, I think that's all I've got, so if you guys have any questions at all on the resolutions, you can include them on your agenda for the next meeting. And then your, your engineer, I think, is gonna come out and talk to you guys next month on the next steps for the phase two. So...
On this loan, now, if we, something happens and we don't accept it or something, what's our chances of getting another?
Probably none, I just read today, the president's budget cuts all of the SRF program, that's his proposal. Um, obviously that'll have to go through Congress, the USDA fundings have also been cut, CDVG programs have been cut or proposed to be cut, so, again, none of this is official, but most of the programs that we utilize to fund community facilities and public infrastructure are, are on the chopping block. So, that includes the SRF program. Uh, the other thing is you've received, um, for your community for this type of project, eight percent is the max you can get. Um, so you're not, if you were to revert these funds, you might, I mean, you might burn some bridges at the state because they spend a lot of time doing the analysis for the underwriting of your loan. Um, but mostly, I just think the programs are gonna dry up, I think you would be taking a huge risk. And again, if you, we've seen this before, where for whatever reason, community might back out and decide not to do a project, but as Erin mentioned, in 2037, you're required to do this. So if you don't do it now, just imagine what those costs are, it's one point three million now, what's it gonna be ten years from now? And there's also potential for no money, you know, that you might be just funding it on your own. So, yeah, I think that would be very risky. Um, I guess if any community in the community or anybody on the board has questions about the funding, why you would or wouldn't take it, I mean, just call me, because I, I feel like I could talk you off the ledge. It would be, I think it would be a, a very bad decision for the community, um, for, for the folks living here, because the cost isn't gonna decrease over time, I've never seen that happen, so...
When we finish phase one, we see a significant, kind of, drop in our water leakage and we still have a very big water leakage. And this project would probably help a lot on that, plus we'll be getting rid of all our lead, hopefully, and, uh, it'd be killing two birds with one stone.
Yeah, it's, it's really awesome that, the timing is actually really good, um, considering you're actually already got a jump on this. Uh, because I feel like with the twenty twenty-seven mandate, you know, to at least start doing this, um, if there is funding still available at that time, it's gonna be highly competitive, because everyone, you're, you're two years ahead of this, which is kind of, I mean, it's rare that it works out in your favor, but, but being two years ahead of it and already having it funded is actually just awesome for your community.
A lot of howards to speak, yes, you. Carrie?
Right. Why don't we make a motion right now?
We can, Carrie.
Because it's new business.
Hmm?
It's new business, we'll be on our way.
We had a question up here.
So, um, just a little bit of details on the restructure. A little bit, a few more details on the restructure of the rates. Um, so, five thousand gallons, here, our customers pay forty-three dollars. So when you were saying restructure the rates, we need to bring it up to fifty-seven, is, so, um, I just, I'm.
I think we had the same conversation at the public hearing, I didn't bring your funding app. Um, but the state also reviewed it, so it's not like just our office, you know, it goes through three different parts of D A N R at the state level before they actually award your funding. Um, if you look at the full repayment, full repayment of the loan, and this comes directly from their board slide, so I don't know if you attended the Board of Water Natural Resources meeting and listened at all, but directly from their staff analysis notes, current rates, it says are fifty-seven for five thousand, and that includes your surcharge, your existing surcharge. If funding is provided as all loan, the surcharge would, of sixty-six dollars and thirty-five cents would be needed to meet the required debt coverage, which would bring the overall rates to a hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-five cents per five thousand. But, at the recommendation, or recommended funding level, a surcharge of seventeen dollars would be required for repayment, because that includes the nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand of grant. Um, but they're saying you don't have to add seventeen dollars on top of what you currently are, because they're seeing cost savings in your, in your cash flow analysis. Uh, they do evaluate the surcharge, so the state will evaluate your surcharge every year, and they're gonna tell you, hey, you're not collecting enough, and you need to raise it, or if you're collecting too much, they'll tell you to do one of two things, pay down your loan early, or reduce that surcharge. The, the dollars collected from a surcharge can only be used for loan repayment. So if you have pipes low, or your water tank fails, none of what's collected from this can be used for that, it can only be used for repayment of the loan. So what they're saying is you can restructure, they said a, a surcharge of seventeen dollars would be required, staff analysis indicates Buffalo Gap can restructure their current rates to keep rates at sixty-five dollars per five thousand gallons. So, um, again, that comes directly from the, the slide presented at the Board of Water and Natural Resources. Um, you'll pa, you'll approve your, your surcharge resolution, and it'll be based off of what the state analysis said. But again, after a year, they're gonna say, hey, city of Buffalo Gap, how much is in your surcharge account? If it's too low, because it has to be at a hundred and ten percent debt coverage requirement annually, they'll tell you to increase it, and then it'll be the board's job to increase it, you won't have a lot of choice there. If it's too high, they'll tell you to decrease it. I think one of the things, though, that I heard from Terry is, there's a potential that your expenses on the drinking water system will decrease, because if you're treating water and you're losing it in the ground, that can be expensive, or just losing water in general. So, if you're fixing the pipes and there's less water loss, maybe there will be less cost for chemicals and supplies and treatment costs. So, again, I mean, I, it's gonna vary, there's gonna be variability there.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions from the public on the water project, or natural hazard mitigation? Nothing? All right, and one thing I was gonna let you know, I did see, I looked a little ahead on the agenda, there's, um, proposed ordinance changes. I was just gonna let you know that our office does help with ordinance revision if you need it. Um, it's typically not for free, a lot of our application work and administration work is all free, but it's gonna be much more reasonable than hiring like a, a consultant to do it. So, if you decide you need help, and can't handle just the task of getting them updated, certainly reach out, and we can let you know about what that would be, if you need help. So, all right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on the, Custer County Emergency Management, I got the paper here. You wanna bring it up as a new business, or?
I need to sign it, I'm gonna carry it, please.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I don't know, man.
On the, Custer County Emergency Management, I don't know if you wanna consider it old business, or bring it up a new business, but it's gotta be signed, uh, sent in by May thirtieth? By May thirtieth, and it will give us a chance, if we need a generator, and it costs us nothing, we're already enrolled in it, and to me, it's up, I should sign, or whoever's gonna be the president to do it. You know, so, I don't know.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Anyone else got any opinions?
Me. Now, I'll make a motion to adjutant.
I second that motion.
All in favor? All right. Okay, building maintenance. I don't think we did much of anything.
Well, yes, um, uh, the last four windows for the upstairs, as, well, after tonight, after we approved the check, will be ordered, and in about six weeks, we'll have the last four windows for upstairs, and we'll have all of the windows, and all of that, and now we just need to get a crew together to start installing them, and get that project done. And all of this project, that's five windows have been donated. I donated two. Marion and Kevin donated one. Kevin, or, uh, Kate Spreeder donated one, and Spreeder ran, or, uh... Valerie donated. And so anyway, but anyway, we've got all the windows, and they will be here in probably four or five weeks, when we send them this check this time. And we'll have all the windows for upstairs, where all of the windows can, will be replaced. And now our next project is going to be to replace the two side doors. Now Candy and I have also, um, bought five bug zappers. They put a couple out here in front of this door, and one in front of each door, but so this summer that we can control the, uh, flies and that, hopefully. And then we'll hang some fly strips here and there, and, uh, keep the flies out, and anyway, and then our next, rest is gonna be the day before Mother's Day, and it's going to be eggs. Bacon. And waffles, and probably some, uh... muffins, whatever, so that's our, our game plan for the, for, say, May, correct?
Why don't we consider screen doors?
Well, we, we have, we have one screen door, already purchased one of those floppy ones, whatever you wanna call them. Uh, through one, one of the small doors, and yes, we, we are considering doing that same thing to the other, be it half of the big door, and half of the other door, or the other door, what, we are working on, um, possible to also. Any, any of these, both of them. So, that's, that's all I got to tell you now. Sorry, I'm out.
Okay, we're gonna have to back up a little bit, I forgot to ask for approval to pay our bills.
I'll make a motion to pay our bills.
I second the motion.
All favor.
I agree.
Okay, animal nuisance control, Ms. Margaret.
Oh, I actually have a problem. I got a, a call on the weekend, uh, from somebody in the ci, in the, that resides here, and they had a couple dogs wandering around their yard, kind of a German Shepherd-like, the little husky-mixed German Shepherd, or, and another one, this is kind of a Heinz fifty-seven, and nobody knows who they belong to. I called around, and I couldn't find anybody that knew who they belonged to.
I think they belong up on the hill.
Do they?
I think so. I see them running around for two years.
Okay, fine, the, the complaint, definitely pictures, I'm gonna show you a picture of them, but I couldn't find out who owned them. So what I told them.
Check with her.
What I told the complainants to do is to, um, keep an eye out, and if they see them again, call me, and we'll try to track it down some more, that's how I handled it, so we kinda left it open. Let me get my phone card out, I'm not sure. If anyone else wants to see a picture of the dog, if anybody knows who they belong to, for sure. Please call me. I, I remember it used to be on the, oh.
Used to be free, I mean, but one was missing away, but I don't see him anymore.
Yeah, you know, and I haven't, I haven't seen.
That'd be deniable, that one. The one that was missing away, that would've been on the denble.
Okay.
I got the old paper, that's where they kept it, I can't remember.
Well, thank you, if you're, if you're asking, call me anytime, I've seen some photos on Facebook, samples of large, it's like, call me. Because we post on Facebook, it's a public, that's a public forum, and we don't really have a, a... We don't have a resource on public forum.
Shelley, can you include Margaret's phone number on our weather bills again?
Please.
Because that's a good place to get information, is on our weather bills, so, thanks, appreciate all that, mutual sharing.
Okay, I can't find the pictures, but, um...
Do you have the bad news for us?
The German Shepherd, about twenty-five pound curly dog.
There we go, I'm serious. Kind of, it's a shepherd's pet, it's probably a shepherd's mix.
I don't like that one, it wasn't, so maybe they're not.
Well, you know what, and then there were some artists like this, in town on that day, on the Sunday, that, one of the ladies that was here, they were doing pictures and drawings of this, of this community's building. And, uh, one of the ladies had a dog, and it was a leech, so these two might have been associated with that group.
Sarah, what that dog looked like? The one that come in your building before?
That was a laugh, but that was the people that were painting, like choosing a picture, that was like one of the people that were wrong.
You know, the, the other thing, you know, with the dogs at large like that, my concern is, while you're going, you might have a charge and bite somebody, and that becomes a city issue.
I don't think that picture's ever.
Maybe, you know, the ones that are practically?
Uh, that shepherd looks. I think it's the people that live across from you.
The ones that live across from you, and that.
Well, that may be windy and not, no, they're, they live across from you.
Is that the looks of the dog? You're on there, it's, yeah.
My dog's a, my dog's a.
I do, I do.
Yeah, my dog's a. That's, okay, I'll pay him a visit, and ask him to keep their dogs in the yard. Because it's a liability for everybody, the dog owner, the, the citizens of town, and the city itself, it's a liability, that we didn't really believe. So, my name, I have a. If you have dogs at large, call me, I won't bite, the dogs might.
There was, the people that had, they were in the painting on the corner, there was like three or four dogs with them, with them, right? I can't believe anyone saw them.
Okay, you saw the dogs, all right.
They're the big, the painting people, they're right at the stop sign across from the bank. But, yeah, they were all trying to take pictures, and they had them.
Okay, while Margaret's showing that picture to Sarah, we'll move on?
I, I.
Roads and alleys. I, I did a little bit of pothole filling and stuff, and there's a extra loaded gravel behind the town, uh, sit-town building over on Second Street, plus there's extra gravel up here. Other than that, that's about all that happened to the roads and alleys.
Hey Terry, I know you're not gonna be the mayor after tonight, or the principal officer of the board trustees, are you still gonna do the roads?
No, I'm not gonna do much of anything, I'll, any, if they need any help locating something, and I know anything like that, I'll help them that way.
I'm sorry to see you go.
Okay, Park Committee, Kim McMan, or McMan, not here yet. My mouth is getting, my mouth is getting dry.
You were on the right path, was Terry. So, um, in our last meeting, we had talked about applying for a grant. Um, we actually felt really pressured in time, uh, and so we decided to not apply for the grant. Also, the city has had some unexpected, um, taxes and whatnot to pay, so we just, we didn't want it to be a burden for the town next year, and so this gives us more time to be big. And so, um, one of the things, well, yeah, so we decided, we have a budget, uh, in this year's budget, and so we're going to use that to start kind of doing groundwork. So that's gonna be, um, like painting the, uh, painting tables and shelter, um, doing something with the surface that's underneath the playground. Um, it, that'll be labor intensive, so we'll probably be asking for some help, whenever it's time to do that. Um, and so, we also were reading in it, um, we could actually include Woodman Hall in this grant, and so that's what I'm reading about, thinking bigger. Um, I know, over the years, I lived here fifteen years, and I know that over the years, Woodman Hall comes up in subject of what, what do we do with it? And so, um, I think it's, it's worth having a good conversation about what does it need? I know we talked about foundation work, um, we don't want stuff and whatnot living under there anymore. Um, so that's, we need to have a conversation about that. And then also, um, the electrical, where, where the large piece stands now, we would need to remove the power line, and so we got kind of a rough estimate. If we were to just move the line, so they could pull, and kind of move it back, and kind of divert it to Woodman Hall, that would cost approximately two thousand dollars. That could be included in the grant, to pay for that. Of course, if we bury it, it's gonna cost more, and they have to put one of those, I think they call it a can, so they have to update Woodman Hall on how the electrical comes in, and that's been cost more.
Well, and that's all fine and great and wonderful, and I think all is free, but now what are we gonna use it for? That has been my big, big, uh, hoorah for, and I'm gonna say it for last, I'm gonna say ten years in, and it don't matter.
I'm tired.
But, but what, what are we going to utilize it for? But are we gonna use it, utilize it for a bit, and I'm just throwing ideas out of F F A, F F A meeting hall, uh, hunting club hall, uh, I, I don't know, but, but, whatever we're gonna spend the money on, be it put a foundation under, a, a forerunner, and a pasture, and whatever, what are we going to utilize?
Right, and I think that's, the town needs to decide that, because, because are we gonna use it if we're not, maybe it needs to be tore down.
Is that just normal?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be tore down, but we need to find a, a store that be it a, a home cooking, do, I mean, I'm sure not just, I mean.
Yeah, so, somebody actually had a, this was an idea, um, and thought it would be great to have it, like, where people could rent it, uh, for birthday parties. So we're gonna have this mark, right? And so we can have it through the, so that people can.
I agree, as long as we have a plan.
Right.
On what needs to be utilized.
Mm-hmm.
But whether we, you know, rent it out, rent free, uh, for birthday parties, or whatever, as long as it's being utilized.
Right.
That is my biggest concern right there, is, is not gonna be utilized, so it's gonna sit there vacant, whether we remodel it or not, then, then we kind of threw good money out of the back.
Right, yep, yeah, because I was thinking, I had somebody mention, um, trying to get a meeting started in town, or, um, you know, if there's a smaller group, I know Kate Spreeder talked about reading to children, you know, when it, when the.
They have a good table now.
That would be a great space to do those things.
So with that, I, we moved here thirty years ago, in this discussion, we used to have almost every party about what to do with Woodman Hall, and I'm shocked it hasn't fallen down yet.
shocked it hasn't fallen down yet, because nobody's done anything, and we used it for the town vault floor when we first came out.
Yes, when I lived in town, in the, the board of the town board meeting, for the town.
Yeah, so...
I'm not gonna tell you that, how long I've been here.
I know, I guess if the town hasn't used it in thirty years, that's how, it's like this auditorium, I mean, the town has never really taken responsibility for this auditorium either, and if they're not gonna take responsibility for that building, they oughta get one now, at least then there won't be stumps living under it.
Well, and that's very true, I mean, utilize it for something, like I said, I'd be sticking up, like I said, in mental, but I don't care.
I'm not against using for someone, but...
Let's continue on, we don't really need to be used.
So, that's a discussion for another day, but the point is, we're gonna think bigger, and so, another thing we came up with in filling out the applications, and asked for the name of the park, and we were like, geez, I don't know, so we just called it Buffalo Gap Sea Park, but...
We're calling it Anderson Park, we don't want to put the rock root up there with the bell on it.
Yep, so, I guess our thought is, then, maybe we should ask the town members, why do you wanna call our park?
Do a vote.
Yeah, yeah, like we did, yeah, so I would, I would just propose that be added to a newsletter or something, if you have an idea, send it in. What else? One thing, another thing that we planned, I think, this summer, is adding one of those boxes, like the Live Miracle Room box, at the park. Len has offered his services, he's got a few plans on these, on what that would look like, and so, we'll just cover that with the park, but that's something we plan on putting in at the park, is, it's one of those, you know, new book...
Real library, real book.
Yeah, yeah, real library.
No lost one, now, they have one.
Right, yep, so, we have books to donate, I'm gonna see if the Book Barn in Hot Springs can donate some kids' books that we can donate, so that is something that we're going to be doing. I wanted to thank everybody who wrote letters of support, they were wonderful letters, the ones that I've seen, and so, you know, we read them next year, when we do this again. And then, finally, I wanted to request permission to remove the large piece of equipment that's out there. It just, yeah, the playground equipment, I think it's gonna cost a lot to do it up to, I know that you guys did a lot of work on it, and I feel mad about that, but the thing with the grant, too, is, you know, the question is, how long does the equipment last? I don't even know how long most have that equipment, so I don't know the answer even to how, how good is that equipment? And so, that's, that's my question to the board, is do we have permission to remove it? And if so, would you like me to use the old equipment, the slide and the miracle ramp? People are interested in it, give me your names, and we'll do a drawing the next meeting.
Water hydrant.
Yeah, but...
You said water hydrant.
I know, but do we wanna, are you gonna, yeah, on the playground?
Playground equipment. Is that new business?
I don't know. I guess it could be a new business, I just wanna make sure that the city is clear, that any work completed prior to a funding award would not be eligible for reimbursement. I understand we need to do some of these things ahead of time, but I just don't want you to do them, and it's not, that they could be reimbursed by the government if we were to get it, so. They can, yeah, yeah, they can. So, do you want it to be new, new business?
Thank you. Well, new needs, equipment is mantled, is that correct?
Yeah, that three piece. There's a family that's interested, but I think we should, might begin with the other pieces that...
So, do you need help with the mantles?
I need permission from the town first to remove it, and so that's what we're deciding, if it's old business or new business. Yep.
I think you need it to the legal right now, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're, two of us are gonna be off the board.
Okay, I know, okay, and then the last thing I had was, I talked about having a water hydrant put in at the park, and I was just curious, is that something that you have on your radar since the summer? I guess, yeah, yeah, that's a great, 'cause then, yeah, eventually, when we get everything done, we wanna add more landscape to it, so it makes it easier, and I need to start watering that up a few more, too.
And a well, and I drilled it, and then people, let people dump rocks in it and ruin it. And so, I'm opposed to any water project, you go down that park, and tell you, get these people in this town to get their head out of there.
Okay. The old business we're gonna bring up to the opening of the first and senior and popular streets, obviously, we can't do anything on what term I got left, or when he's got us, so that's gonna be up to the new board, and I'm sure plenty of people who wanna, wanna see it open, and there's people that don't wanna see it open, so. Okay, public comment? Obviously, there's no public comment, and then we'll turn, turn the page here.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting for reorganization.
Yes.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for having me for the last one.